Are we on? Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Town Council Budget Workshop for fiscal year 2017. Mr. Administrator, do you want to start with the presentation?
Sure. You all have the PowerPoint slides in front of you, but also on the screen. This is the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017 budget. When we start the process, we always talk about some economic indicators. The first is the CPI for Boston. This is traditionally what people look at for what increases you may be seeing in costs around here. It's actually very interesting this year for the Northeast Regional. We have seen a reduction in the Consumer Price Index. The reason for that is that oil prices are dropping. Boston, you did see a slight tick up at .7 percent. In the national one, you saw a slight tick up at .2 percent. Again, if you heard recently, Social Security is not given a COLA this year. And that's because of the... The main reason is the oil prices have dropped so much, but the cost of living has not increased. The second is the unemployment rates for the area. We remain very low for the town. It's 2.8 percent, which is actually negligible when discussing it with economists. The next for the Portsmouth region is 3.1 percent. The county is 3.8 and the state is 3.5. And overall, for the country, is 5.5. So economic-wise, unemployment for the town is doing very well. The next is the estimated, and I'm going to say estimated, current tax rate. It has not been set yet. This is in discussions with the school. The school has not determined their fund balance. As you were aware, last year, they got the authority to keep a fund balance. So this is still an estimate, and the state has not set it. The town tax rate estimate right now is $6.20, or it's 25 percent of the bill. The county is $1.10, or 4 percent. And the remaining 71 percent is what goes to school. $15.41 is raised for the local school. And $2.46 is the state school, which just goes back to the local school automatically anyways.
So just some people that are watching, you're talking about the 2016 tax rate.
Fiscal year 16.
While we are actually in right now.
Right. This has not been set yet.
Well, they will get in November, December.
Right. This has not been set yet.
But our 620 is locked?
No.
No?
No. This is why we're saying estimate. We don't... There could be some changes from the state. They'll give us updates on revenue sharing. There's a valuation for that one small utility that we don't have, that they have to provide us with. So that may change it slightly, but it's not going to be... Not huge between these. This is the... Just a chart for the 10-year comparison. As you can see, the town has, you know, been pretty flat, except that one year in 2011, when it went up to $7.03. And that was everybody that year. 2531 was the tax rate that year. We are estimating a drop from 2575 to 2517, if everything goes as planned. One of those reasons is the valuation of the town went up about $11 million. We've added a number of new houses down near the Rockham Country Club, as well as part of the valuation of the New Market Mills is online. And that drop that you see there was the revalue year. So...
What percentage of the mills is online?
Fifty.
Fifty?
Does it go... How does it go up from there, Steve? Is it 60, 70, 80, 90, 100, or how's it work?
No, it's 50 for two years, and I think 75 for one, and then 100 percent.
So in three years, give or take, it's going to be 100 percent value?
About four, yeah.
Not that I'm asking you to do it, but just curious. Would it be a lot of work sometime to... Is there anything... Any algorithms or anything that would give you an inflation-adjusted value on looking at this... You know, the previous slide where you're looking across at the tax rate over there? That's in a constant dollar, whereas there's been inflation over that 15-year period of time. So essentially, I mean, what that says is if you're looking at the town tax rate that's nearly flat, in an inflation-adjusted dollars, it's been going down substantially over that time, which is...
But inflation's been very low in the last three years.
Right, but even inflation of 1 to 2 percent over 15 years is a substantial... You would see a substantial...
How much do you think it would change it, really? I mean, we're talking degrees.
Twenty, 25 percent? I mean, 1 to 2 percent times 15 years compounds, you know? Inflation adjustment would make that look very different, and it would be economically accurate to consider it that way. I'm not asking you to do it, but I think it works.
Yeah.
But I agree that in the future, I think you see both real dollars and adjusted inflation.
Okay. The budget. As of right now, I am proposing a budget of $10,134,923, or a 4.96 percent increase over the previous year. The department heads proposed an $11,313,113 budget, or 17.16 percent increase over the previous year. The increase is $478,504. Enterprise funds of that is $64,813. And all others is the remaining $413,691. Here's just the breakdown by fund. The general fund would be $6,989,894. Special revenues is $1,031,728. And the enterprise funds would be $2,113,301. Just to show you where it goes, 55 percent of the budget is the general fund. 37 percent is the enterprise funds, and special funds are 8 percent. The actual enterprise funds have been growing recently. That's mainly due to the bond payments because of the wastewater plant. And again, this is just another chart showing the comparison between the last few years. So where's it going? In my proposed budget, healthcare is seeing a $73,188 increase. Retirement is $29,066 increase. Workers' compensation insurance, $11,399. Property and liability insurance is $13,660. $10,000 increase in the merit pool. Election salaries is $17,747. And police salaries, $23,815. That's the first year of the contractual obligation from the approved contract last year. Capital reserves, from my budget, for the additional, is $50,000 going to building improvement capital reserve fund. Stormwater would be additional, $25,000. Macintosh Dam, $25,000. Did I say Macintosh Dam? Sorry. McAllen, yeah. Recreational facilities is $18,666. And for the enterprise funds, water and sewer is sledge disposal is $25,000. Electricity for the wastewater is $60,000. Chemicals for wastewater is $13,000. And lab for wastewater is $10,000. The reason why there's such a large increase in the sewer is because 2017... Fiscal year 17, we actually have to run two plants that year. It's the changeover from the old one to the new one, so you actually have to run two at the same time.
Steve, would it... Would it be difficult to have another column there just to tell us how much money is totally in those funds right now? In other words, that's what you're adding, correct?
Yeah.
You know, I'm just saying.
Yeah. If you want to know how much is in the capital reserves.
Yeah, what page?
It's actually... There's a handout in front of you.
That's the one that I...
So just to look at the numbers. When I... Taking out water and sewer out of this, you're looking at... That's roughly $270,000 in the top two headings, operational capital reserve. And... But the overall proposed budget for a general fund, looking at slide, the fiscal year 27 proposed budget is about... If I'm right, that's about 1.5 million higher, from 6.6 million to 8.1 million.
What slide are you looking at?
Then slides aren't...
No, mine is... That's what the department's proposed.
Oh, okay.
What I propose is 6.9.
Okay. That's right. I should have noticed that.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's only about $300,000 higher. And you're... That's... Okay. That lines up. Thanks.
And here's the proposed revenue budget. As you know, we need to look at both because revenues... These are not... Everything that's not tax, property taxes. We are proposing an overall revenue budget of $5.6 million, which is an increase over the previous year. The general fund is at $3 million. You have the special revenues at $462,000. And the enterprise funds at $2,094,000.
What is that based on?
Estimates.
I'm sorry. The increase of...
Motor vehicle registrations.
So it's...
Yeah. We're seeing about $200,000 additional motor vehicle registration.
But this is going to suggest that we're going to see 200,000 more on top of that.
Oh, yeah.
So like a $400,000 increase from two years ago.
Yes, absolutely. We are seeing that. We're seeing more people...
I find that...
It's been exploding. What did you... Well, what did you budget this year, Steve? Just to give you an idea. What did you budget this year for?
Trying to remember off the top of my head. But we revised it to additional...
It was another 40 percent, wasn't it? Or another 30 percent higher than...
Motor vehicles are just going higher.
At some point, that bubble's going to break.
It does.
And then like the party's going to end.
But understand, when we have to do this, if we don't, then I'm going to have an additional $1 million that go into fund balance, because it's not like we don't collect it.
So Steve, if you had last year... I'm just making up numbers. If you had for motor vehicle revenues, $100,000.
Yeah.
And it came in at 150 this year.
Yep.
Are you starting at 150 and going to 250? Or are you staying at the number you had last year?
We stay at the number we had last year. We look at the economy. We do look at it to figure out, you know, are motor vehicle sales continue going up? Because remember, we're estimating not for the coming June, two Junes from now. And we have to... We do look at... Because we don't want to do exactly what you said. You know, something happened in the economy between when we started and where we are now. We're going to reduce it. So no, we look at what the current number is. But we just...
So if this year comes in at 150...
Yep.
Example. You're going to start at 150 and then add to it?
And then we add to it, yes.
And that's an additional 150, basically?
I guess... What's the...
My concern is that we are overestimating revenues.
Yeah.
That is my biggest concern.
But we're not seeing that turn down.
This is two years from now, like you said.
I understand that. And we revise this every annually. We do this in October. We do it twice. And yes, there are times when you might have to revise it down. But, I mean, we're not seeing... It's not slowing at all. And this is conservative as well. I mean, we're just not... The town tax collector does all the motor vehicle registrations, and we're not seeing a change.
No, it's exploding.
Not right now.
It's not changing. It's exploding.
Eventually, it will level off. Is budgeting to it?
Yeah. My concern is we're budgeting to the continued explosion two years into the future. When people are buying new cars now, do we expect they're going to keep buying new ones every year?
Well, I mean, I think if you look at what happened with motor vehicle, it's hard to predict.
Right.
For a long time, it was depressed.
And you know why it's been exploding? Not to, you know... Because Amazon doesn't sell cars yet. The reason it's exploding is because between eight, nine, and 10, nobody did anything.
Exactly.
So now you're seeing this incredible influx in car purchases.
I think it will settle down.
It's going to slow down at some point.
But what you're not seeing also is you're not seeing the extravagant cars that you saw in previously. You used to see the much more Suburbans, foreign cars, luxury cars. And now you're seeing the more sedans, those kind of things.
I know what you're seeing, but I see a lot of BMWs flying by.
Oh, I know. Yes.
I mean, there's also a predictive increase in what we're getting from the state.
Yes.
We need to get out of the road.
I mean, understand that if we... This is an estimate. If we don't... If we estimate this down and we receive those funds, then I... Then we hear it, well, the fund balance is going too high.
Can you explain this to me the opposite way, though? What if you estimate it too high and it comes in way low?
We have to... We reduce it. And we either withdraw from fund balance to offset that and then reduce it the next year, or you increase the taxes to cover it.
Yeah. It seems like a much worse situation than estimating.
But we maintain some surplus in our... You know, the surplus we maintain. And the, you know, the 8 percent is the desirable.
Right.
And if you... If you... I mean, so far in my... This is my third year on the council. You know, we have always... It's been expansive in that time. So we're always seeing revenues come in higher. But you can't expect that you're going to correctly estimate. And you'll have an occasional one where the economy will turn and...
2007, '08 is the year you had the economy turn. Most of it wasn't from motor vehicles. It was because the interest on investments wasn't there. In 2005 and '06, the money that we had in just in savings, you were pulling in probably about $200,000 on interest. The following year, when the interest rates just went away, you got $10,000. So that's where you lost the revenue. Motor vehicles, you can start seeing... You can... Motor vehicles, you see the slowdown well in advance.
Like, I'm less concerned about the, like, particulars of where we're overestimating or potentially overestimating revenue. Councilman Levy and I were the only two that were sitting up here in 2011, when people were pitchforks out here. Because we overestimated, like, what we're going to be able to pull from fund balance to depreciate or depress the tax rate. Under... And then the state downshifted a bunch of costs to us, so our expenses were higher.
Yep.
And they cut their revenue sharing. So our revenue was lower. And we ended up with, like, the seven... Like, the huge spike in the dollar, dollar and a half spike in tax rate.
But we did get Steve out of that.
That's true, yeah. But I don't... My concern is that we're shutting ourselves up with an overestimation.
Well, here's the situation. One, you don't have any revenue sharing, so you're not going to lose that anymore. Two, this is not... The revenue estimate here is not so high that the fund balance... You've also made your fund balance level. It's 8 percent where we should be. If this came in... Something happened, the economy just collapsed, you can make up that difference, the $200,000 from fund balance.
For one year.
For one year. And then you... But you have to get people ready.
Steve, just to sum up, because we could do this.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just saying. No, no. To Phil's point, because I didn't focus as much on page 63. The concern is, if you look at page 63, which is nice to have, if... And that's, you know, that's a pretty scary concept, particularly with, you know, perhaps spending X amount of dollars in other areas of the town. When you're looking at going potentially from 653 this year... I'm just using what it says here without any adjustment. You know, to even... Jesus. Even 2020, which is five years away, four years away, or 845 for the year before, you're talking about $3 from 2020 on the tax rate.
Yeah. It's a 50 percent increase in five years.
Magical projection.
Yeah. And I'm only bringing...
The five year.
The five year.
So the only reason I think this is relevant is, to everybody's point, if we're, you know, personally... This is my opinion. I would be looking at very conservative growth. That way, we'll tend to be more conservative in our thinking. And better we have $3 million in a fund balance and have some money to throw somewhere than you try cutting. You know, after people have sort of made plans or you start, you know, getting projects lined up. And that's... I think that's what you're hearing, but it's not being maybe said properly or exactly.
We can reduce the...
Should be.
I mean, again, it's... The 5.6, if I didn't think we were seeing it, I wouldn't have put it in. I really wouldn't. I mean, this is... 5.6 is still conservative as it comes to this.
Yeah. The only thing I would say is... I wouldn't mind if you took... Because, you know, Gary brought it up. And I think we're... As we look on here, it's going to kind of weigh on me. Why do we see that 9.2 on page 63? What are the main drivers that make a 50 percent increase in the town tax rate over the next five years?
Matt.
Do you want to say a couple of words? Because that's not in this presentation.
Five-year estimated budget.
Yeah. A lot of the things that I'm seeing over the next five years are going to be increase in healthcare costs. This year, initially, I projected it at 15 percent. I was told that that was reasonable. It actually came in at 6.5. Last year, it was 8.5. So we're going to be seeing some large increases in healthcare. We have more people coming onto our healthcare. This year, we're projecting three more additional people. Also, for motor vehicle revenue, I'm projecting that's going to be flattening out, although we're still seeing people buying larger vehicles. At some point, that's got to level off.
Larger or more expensive?
More expensive.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're seeing a flatten out when?
We haven't seen it yet. But it just only...
But you're projecting it in this... In this page, they're already...
I'm projecting it to happen sometime in 2017.
So your license permits and fees are like the predominant...
Yeah.
Increase in your revenue?
Yeah.
So if you're projecting it to be flat and I'm seeing $130,000 increase...
For '17, I'm going up. But then for '18, '19, and '20, I'm going back down. Okay?
Okay.
I think maybe to circle back around, I think that is... My concern is that in the setup for that... I mean, all of this projection is what we asked for and is important. And it's important to realize what we're doing right now is doing what we can in the setup for that. And maybe if I can address it, I don't want to budget to unanticipated revenues. I mean, we can only do our best. But I'm concerned that for this year particularly, and I'll put it right out there, I think we need to go lower this year. I think we need to plan the setup a little tighter, a little better. I am concerned that with the increase of 10 or almost $11 million in property valuation, with additional projects coming online, and the other half of the mills will come online. But we have done our best to increase development in the town responsibly, to do a lot of these things to hold the line. But I think that tax rate... I think we owe it to the taxpayers to bring that tax rate down and not budget to revenues. And that's what I'm seeing. I think this... I think we need to hold the line better on budget and drop it just a bit. I know that there... You know, I've got about $200,000 or whatever this was, that I understand that healthcare costs go up. There's some... There's all of that that just kind of is what it is. But I think the rest of the department's staying bottom line. I think it's got to...
Well, let's stick with revenue right now, because we're talking revenue projections.
Yeah.
Like, to circle back... Not to cut you off inside. But because we're moving into a budget. But I want to stick with revenue right now.
Right.
Do we want to downshift the estimate of the revenue? Or do we want to assume 5.6 is overcoming?
Firstly, I'm comfortable with staying as it is projected. I think, you know... I think it is going up. It's hard... You know, as Gary says, it's kind of exploding. I think if this is a conservative estimate, you just don't know. You know, it's an estimate two years from now. We don't know. But I think you've got to be as accurate as you can. If you can... If you're... Like Steve said, if we continually underestimate, we'll end up with high fund balances. And we just need the best estimates we got. We take our best shot.
That's what I'm saying. I'm okay with that, but I would like to see more of that come back into a tighter budget to give the taxpayers more of a break. I think we've promised that we've been trying to do that. And I think I'd like that to come to reflect in the budget and not budget to it.
But you're okay with the 5.6 as the revenue estimate?
Yeah.
Can I just ask Matt one last question? I'm sure it's in one of these documents, but if you know it, you can... Last year, what did you project for car revenue for the town? Meaning for this coming year?
Can you give me the exact number?
Yeah.
16?
Oh, for this particular tax rate?
Yes.
Actually, I increased my estimate for this particular tax rate.
In the middle of it or be... In other words, when?
About $50,000.
We actually filed it about 15, 20 days ago.
Okay. So what number did you use?
I used $1,290,000.
So roughly $1,200,000, right? And what did it come in at last year?
The actuals?
Yes, please.
I don't have that readily available.
Oh, I thought you had all that stuff.
But it's going to be about that. So basically, what I try to do is try to tighten up the revenue estimate for 2017, so there's less revenue being turned back to fund balance.
But I thought the revenue that came in for cars this year...
Yes.
We didn't budget nearly that high.
For 16...
Last year.
Last year, we did not budget nearly that high.
Okay.
And this year, I'm trying to budget as high as what we're actually receiving.
As best we can.
Yeah, as best we can.
Now, you see, that's a little...
Yes. It's... It could be dangerous.
Because in all honesty, and I'll leave it at this, because a point's been made. Matt has always come in lower, significantly lower.
I don't think that's wise.
Yeah, to his credit. I'm not criticizing. I'm saying Matt has always come in lower, saying, you know, let's see what happens here. And, you know, we project a number, and it would come in significantly higher. And it's like, jeez, I can't believe this is happening. Well, okay, well...
But I'd rather it that way.
And then he did it again.
And that's what...
And then he did it again. And now he's starting to say, well, you know, if it's coming in here, hey, let's just go with it.
Are you saying it's less conservative this time? Or are you about...
No, he's calling for what DC's saying.
Yeah. I'm trying to tighten up the revenue estimate.
Trying to be more accurate.
More accurate, right.
So your 2017 is a reflection of actuals from '15?
Yes. It's closer to '15.
So what's the increase? Where's the increase?
The increase is going to be... What we're seeing for increases are motor vehicle permit. That's just been...
Didn't we just say that your revenue is the same as your actuals from two years ago?
Yes, right. But I mean, the increase... That's part of the increase. And then you also have another increase in building permits. We're also seeing... Oh, we also increased our revenue for recreation for the revolving fund. That's included as part of the total. We're increasing revenues for water and sewer. That's part of the overall total as well. So when we look at the budget, okay, at total revenues versus total expenditures, you're looking at all activities, whether it's taxable or not taxable. It's not broken out by...
The number you're thinking is that $3,050,093 is just general fund revenue.
All right. Okay, I see what you're saying. Okay. I still think it's too high, but let's go on.
This next slide is an estimate only, using the data as we have today. So, tax impact on the town administrator's fiscal year sixteen budget. You take the gross appropriation, the ten million, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars, you less the revenues estimate of six, five million, six hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and one dollars. You add twenty thousand dollars for overlay, which is where we pay for our abatements and those kind of items. War service credits is one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars, that's the veterans credits that we provide. So the net town appropriation would be four million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars. And then you take the assessed value, and the tax rate would be six dollars and fifty-three cents per thousand. Sorry, an increase of thirty-two, three cents.
Thirty-three cents.
This way, yeah. Average home value is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Current town portion of tax bill is one thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars annually. The proposed would be one thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars annually, a five percent increase, or seven, the seven dollars and fifty cents annually on the average home.
Except for me.
Yeah, except for you. You're the one that, we were the one that got, yeah. So, but that's the impact.
Questions? All right.
The first department is Town Clerk Tax Collector.
Can you give us the pages when you do it?
Page thirty-one. We've asked every year, is there any reason they can't put an L?
Well, sure.
Yes, there is a reason.
Oh, okay.
It's the, the state has a certain numbers that we have to follow.
Okay.
So the budget comes this way.
Well, you know what you could do next year then? You could put the page number of, of what each department, what page it's on, on...
Is it table conference?
Yeah, but it's, okay. I, I guess what I'm really saying is, it took me, go ahead, it took me five minutes to...
What page are we on?
We're on page thirty-one.
Fine, Town Clerk is page thirty, isn't it?
Thirty is like the...
Okay. So...
All right, sorry.
Yep. So, the majority increase for this, for this fiscal year is all based on elections. This year, we have, this year coming, we have four elections, including, including a presidential primary. The majority of the increase in the costs are on the cost for staff. Usually, we have twelve staff members. For presidential alone, we have twenty that we pay just to act as ballot clerks and tally clerks. There are additional increases in the cost of ballots and coding those ballots, along with, you know, minor increases in meals, we have to pay everyone and at least feed them during that time. For all four elections, we have to pay our supervisors, moderators, again, all those tally clerks. And the additional increase is the extra time that the supervisors have to take on the outside to maintain the checklist, add new registrations, which during a presidential year, we usually see a couple, we can, we can be up to a couple thousand new registrations on just presidential election day. And everything else, that, that's a major increase for that year, is the number of elections. My postage budget did go up just a hair. Last year, we, yeah, compared to last year, it was...
Why did it go up so much last year, the postage?
We combined the special postage, we had two lines, special postage and regular postage, and we combined that from two lines to one line.
Oh, I see.
So it didn't, it didn't really increase, we just sort of combined the two lines. And during that combination, we didn't budget for the cost of tax bills, so that is back into the budget this year.
Thank you. Other questions? Or do you have anything else?
Well, let me jump in here really quick. There's one line item that was identified after Steve posted the budget, and that's the part-time salaries. I had put in one of her clerks at a hundred percent being charged to that department. That clerk is actually being charged to water and sewer as well. So, part-time salaries needs to be reduced from forty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven to twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and nineteen, or seventeen thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollar difference. The, on the spreadsheet that Steve and I are using, that adjustment has already been made, so it's going down.
What's the difference? It goes from forty, forty-five, fifty-seven to what?
Forty-five, one fifty... To twenty-seven, nine, one, nine.
So it's a seventeen K reduction?
Yes.
But, that seventeen goes into the enterprise funds.
But that hits the rate users on the taxes.
Yeah, 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 but I just want to make sure you don't, it's not a cut, it's a moving.
Yeah, but it's...
I understand what you're saying, yeah.
It wasn't already counted in water?
It was not. Was it?
It was.
So you doubled it?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I thought I understood.
Yeah, that's not what I was told.
Okay.
So...
What would you know anyway?
I know.
We talked, I don't know, a year or so ago about adding another ballot box?
Yes.
Where are we at with that?
I've talked to the school.
Do you see the need or...
Well, the, the need that year was because the ballot was five pages. That was the need, that was the backup of the box. We've since then had other elections with two, three pages, and we've had no problem. I have talked to the school department, and they have also discussed possibly purchasing one of those boxes, because we do have, you know, we would use it for town and school as well. But I can definitely keep looking into that to see if, we'll really know after this presidential year if the increase in the registered voters requires another box.
Okay.
Right, right. But I think the main concern that year was there were five ballots, made the backup of the box.
And we don't expect to see that again, but you never know.
Right.
It was also downstairs, wasn't it?
It was downstairs, yep.
So that was a double whammy.
Right.
Because if you had had that over at the high school, it probably would have flowed a little better, because...
A little bit.
It was crazy down there. They had lines out...
You still only have one box to put that down to.
But there were lines out the doors, because they only had so many places for people.
People were already impatient as raised.
It was an anomaly election. It was also an incredibly high turnout.
And one issue we did have is the actual box that the machine sits on, that was having some problems, and we did replace that box this year.
Oh, okay.
So we got a brand new, well, it's, it's slightly used, but I was guaranteed it's way better than what we had, so hopefully that will...
You had the perfect storm, you had the bond?
Oh, yeah.
The charter amendments, and...
Between those two alone?
The location, so it's, one, remember, the town ballot now is one question, unless there's a bond or a petition. It's just whether or not you approve the budget.
Right.
So.
Okay. Anything else? The Town Clerk has asked. Thank you, Phil.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Police. Please. Forty-one.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
You have specific, our budget's up one point six, two percent. The operating portion of the budget is actually down. I decreased one of the line items by twelve thousand dollars, the one for equipment field supplies. That's the twelve thousand dollars that we budgeted last year for the body cameras, for the officers. That was an increase of that amount. And so I've decreased it, we're not purchasing the cameras in next year's budget, obviously. The percentages that you see increased overall come from salary increases. Both the union and non-union employees receive raises, and the projection for the, for the, just to pay the current personnel at the same rate is the increase in the full-time salary line item. The overtime line item has been increased to reflect the percentage of increase to the non, to the union members. Same number of hours of overtime, but the additional cost at a higher rate. I don't know exactly where the projection came for the part-time salaries increase. We had talked about adding, I have added two additional part-time people. Part-timers are a tough, are tough to hire and train, because they require almost the exact amount of training that a full-timer does. So it's, it's not cost-effective if you can't retain them. I have two additional part-time people who are, come to us trained, so that they're ready to work. I would anticipate that I can probably fit them in to cover vacancies in the schedule, so that would increase it a little bit. But I don't know where that number, the last, the final number on the forty-one came from, that was, that came from your office, I think.
Because he actually was thirty-one, right, this year? So it's, it's up ten grand.
Right. And we haven't, we haven't given any of the, the part-time staff, and the one that's the longest-term person is the prosecutor. The prosecutor hasn't received a raise in six or seven years.
Can we reduce that estimate to the actual thirty-one?
It's up to you. I, basically, what I've got is a list of people who would be filling that position and estimated number of hours that the, that the chief would need for those people. So...
Even if you split it, you know, get something?
Something, yeah. Counselor Thompson has her light on.
Maybe this dovetails into it, too. My question is, Chief, the, the offset of two part-time people, assuming all the things that you talked about as far as qualification and training, offsetting two part-time people versus what's been spent for overtime for vacation coverage? Which is a big line item of yours.
In addition, as things change in, in the world, we, we're starting to accumulate more and more document, documentation. Some of the part-time help is actually being used to offset secretarial time, so then it's not filling in for somebody's vacation or what have you. I'm using part-time staff on the dispatch side to come in and not dispatch, but to do clerical things.
So it's not a part-time officer that you're talking about, it's part-time, like admin staff?
Right.
Okay.
That's what we've used in, in this last six months. I anticipate that we'll be hiring a part-time officer.
Okay.
You know, within this, the next couple of months, that will be working into that, this budget, that we'll use to actually work shifts.
And that's my question. Some, there, there are sometimes in my experience that taking somebody that you already have, that you're already paying, and you already have a set amount of, the benefits on top, if you hire somebody, I'm just going to pick a number at forty thousand a year, and, you know, their benefits are set. If you pay them and some additional salary, it doesn't necessarily increase their, their benefits a little bit. Versus pulling somebody else on, you know, it's cost analysis, kind of like, kind of like Matt's situation, too.
Yep. I, we're budgeting...
Will that cut your overtime, I guess is what I'm...
No. And here's where we stand with that. I'm down two people right now. I've got somebody out of injury leave, and I've got one in the police academy who has been hired to fill a vacancy. So we're running with two full-time officers, less than we normally have. And so that's got to be covered with overtime and adjusting schedules and what have you. There is very little wiggle room in there, and I'm going to probably expend the overtime budget with court and vacation and everything else that we, that we need to cover. So this is a little bit of extra wiggle room for me, if I can hire a part-timer that I don't need to spend money to train, that can fill in a couple of those spots for me. But the part-timer can't work, they're, they're going to be full-time employed someplace else, and they're going to come over here and they're going to be able to work when they can work. So they can take a little bit of...
Okay.
The stress off the schedule.
And then they don't need the benefits necessarily, and they're not, they're not full-time. How soon is that one officer that's in training coming, coming out?
December, probably February before he's really on his own.
Yep, okay.
December he'll be out of the academy and then...
Let's just remember, we're talking about next year right now.
Yeah, no, 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 I understand what I'm trying to form a basis for, yeah, okay.
And it's, it's, it's very tough to propose a budget that you're going to end two years from now with, knowing that some of the line items in my budget have been the same since two thousand and three. And we've adjusted every year to try to make these things work. My budget is actually, the only reason I came in in the black last year was because of the fact that the gas prices dropped. In March, the department heads are told, hang on, don't spend any more money. So we've got to plan for, we're using a nine-month budget, and we got to hang on for three months because of snow removal or a bad winter storm. We need to plan so that if you really want me to plan what the police department's going to need, I need to know that we're not going to have to pony up in, in January or in April to try to cover the rest of these shortfalls.
Yep, understood.
So I'm, I'm trying to look at the fact that, that we're being asked to do more, not less, and with the same resources, and we've been able to finagle it for a long time. My operating budget, the past, the part that I have control, or not salaries, has decreased ten thousand dollars since I've become chief in ten years. So this is pretty close. I could live with five thousand dollars less, maybe, in the part-time account if we don't give anybody a raise, and I could, I can probably make that work.
Counselor Parker, is your still talking about part-time or is this a different topic? So let's run this to ground and then...
Okay, go ahead.
So, do coun, what do counselors think? Reduction of five thousand in the part-time?
And just round it to thirty-six?
But will that affect people's salary?
You want thirty-six, five, five, eight?
They can't increase their, their salary increases, they're unionized, so like, they're locked.
Not the part-time people.
Not the part-time people, that's true.
I would take the part-time down, and I, I think, I think the fuel can be adjusted a bit, too.
Let's stick with the, we'll go to the fuel.
I would say if the chief is not...
I agree.
Really concerned, I mean, I, I know you want it, but if, if you're not really hyper-concerned.
I, I use the three, believe it or not, I use full-time, part-time, and overtime accounts. I've got to work with the three of them. So sometimes I've come out over in the overtime account, but under in the part-time account.
Right.
So it's, it's a, I'm, I'm using it as a pool of money to do what I need to get done by the time that the, the budget's at the end of the year.
So if we reduce...
If I had what I had this year, or in the current fiscal year, which is thirty-five, thirty-six, I can, I can make that work.
Thirty-six, five, five, eight?
Go. What's the reduction of how much?
This year, that, wasn't the budget...
I mean, this year was, it was thirty-five. Can we just stick with thirty-five?
Yes.
Okay. I was going with what you guys wanted.
No, I was trying to figure out where you came up with thirty-six, five, five, eight.
You said reduce it by five thousand, which is thirty-six, five, five.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So that's a reduction of five, five? Six, five?
Six, five, five, eight.
Uh, Counselor Parker?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. One, I just wanted to clarify, you're, you're saying the, are we moving away from having the body cameras now? Is that on hold, or did you, it's just a matter of when you're implementing that?
Well, I hate to buy something, equipment-wise, until the final quarter of the year. And the reason for that is because I don't know what's going to happen. If I have a homicide, God forbid, we're probably going to incur fifteen thousand dollars' worth of overtime, just because of the nature of the, of the offense and what we're going to need to do manpower-wise. So those type of situations, I wait and do that. In addition, right now, what's going on is there's been an upsurge with this particular type of technology, and it's brought on its own set of problems, basically with right-to-know requests for an entire month's worth of officer video.
Yeah.
Right now, there are several bills that are pending in the legislature that are going to help define what, what is, what is going to be released and, and that type of thing. So I'm, I'm hoping that by the spring, that'll all be ironed out, and I'll know exactly what to do. It may be a decision down the road that, where if it becomes too cumbersome, I know that Seattle, Washington just scrapped their program, because it was so hard just to fill the right-to-know request.
You know, I've been following the issues around that. So are we right now, we haven't bought them yet?
Haven't bought them.
And we're not buying them right away?
I've got pricing in place, I've got vendors call me all the time, and I'm waiting to see what happens with the state law offices.
No, I think that's proven, I'm, I'm with you.
Absolutely.
No problem.
Appreciate that.
And on dues memberships, I'm just kind of curious that is, are you, it always seems like the actuals come in, come in lower, are we, are you expecting to go to the forty-two hundred this year on dues membership, or is that, you know?
Yes, and what, what that covers is, we have several members of the department that for reasons like signing complaints and what have you, have to be licensed as JPs, have to be appointed as JP, so we take care of their JP expenses.
Okay.
We've got a bunch of them that are coming due in the next year or so that we're going to want to renew. In addition, we're anticipating that there's going to be some additional cost to these school resource officers, memberships, and his professional organizations, which he...
Does the school, just a dumb question, does, does the school pay for the officer that's at the school all the time?
No.
Do you have the fourteen?
He's a police officer, and we, he's there by my assignment. We ran into some issues about who controls what he does years ago, and we got back when we reestablished the program. I'm in charge of his training expenses totally, and I can pull him from the school if I need to, to use him somewhere else. They have been very, very good about sending him to training.
You've already answered my question. I don't want to raise, you don't have that...
You don't have time.
You want, no, he wants control. I mean, ultimately, he wants to have control of the officer.
Oh, yeah.
That was the answer. Counselor Thompson brought up gas. Do you want, do you want, do you want me to ask, or do you want to ask? I'm assuming we're asking the same question.
Well, and this, here, here I go again. This is something that I looked at at every, every department, is, is because fuel costs are down, obviously, we don't know two years where they're going to go, but they are down. So what I tend to do is, I look at the bottom line, and then I work up. I understand how you, within line item, you can move things around, and that's, that's fine. I had, you know, a suggestion of where something could be trimmed in fuel, and fuel was, was one. I don't particularly care, based on what we did with, with part-time salaries, if it comes out of that one, I had a net number in my head of, of trimming the, the overall department budget back by five thousand. So we've already exceeded that. Now, where you take that out of, I don't want to be, I don't want to be telling you, I can go to the bottom line, I can give line item suggestions, I don't want to cripple you either, but fuel was the big one for me, and that goes across all departments, is trimming that back a, a bit. Is trimming that back a, a bit, but I think we've already done that in the part-time line item thing.
Is, are salaries and other costs fungible? Is it like, his budget is, what, 1.3?
Yep.
Like, is that completely movable? Like, could he move stuff out of salaries into gas or gas into salaries?
Yeah.
Totally fungible.
Yeah. So I didn't want to be as bold as saying, no, you need to cut a salary line item. I was looking for some other wiggle rooms.
The other time we have to come to the council is if we want to move it from police to recreation.
Okay.
Right, right. So fuel is something that, yes, we should look at, but I think without, without crippling the department, I think we've already addressed that within the part-time salary line item to my satisfaction, so.
So don't touch it.
If we do, I'm not.
I can just, can I just give you the number? I'm just looking, because if he printed this any smaller, I mean.
And that's why, that's why I didn't do it.
I can't give, paper only comes in once, I get legal.
So, so gasoline, just so you know, in, the final budget in 14 was, was 33,43 and they spent 32. But gas was very high, if you recall back and, you know, that's when it was crazy. I'm looking at 14, they budgeted 30. And, and then.
15, we have that, they budgeted 30 and they spent 21, almost 22.
So I mean.
So then to go to 34, I thought there was potential savings in.
Yeah, and there probably, it could probably go a couple of grand, but if it's, if it's.
If we're, if we're already, on one hand, we're concerned that revenues may not be as, you know, if you want to be more conservative about, we can leave the revenues where they are and, and give them, you know. I mean, I, I think, we don't know what fuel's going to be in a couple of years.
Oh, we picked up 17 grand in the tax, in the tax collector, which just, which just saved me from squeezing the chief another 5,000, so.
Remember Matt also mentioned, we estimated 15% in healthcare.
Understood.
Went down to 6.5 in the new one, so.
The only thing that I'll just say about fuel, because I'm no, you know, fuel expert, but we, we didn't have fuel coming out of this country really back in 14, the way it is now with the fracking. Not that, I'm a big fan of fracking, but nonetheless, they are fracking.
It's a fact, yeah.
Yeah, so.
It's a frack.
You know, that, that number, it's not a ton of money, but you know, five grand here and two grand there and, you know, you might find a few bucks.
Yeah.
So departmentally, what are we comfortable with for, for overall PD, regardless of how he spends it, are we, where we want it to be?
Personally, I could see a reduction of 2,000 to 3,000 between dues, because if you look at FY14, the dues were even less, they're like 2,800. Like 2, 3,000 more reduction, I'm fine.
If that, if that bring, allows us to move on, I'm fine with that.
Okay, give me, give me a number. I'm hearing, everybody's saying something different. I need to focus it so I know.
People want to leave it?
What with the 6,5?
I'm, I'm comfortable with the 65,58. Again, because to me, we just, we just found a $17,000 error, not that I want to let anybody off, whatever, but, but I'm, I'm okay with that. Well, I do. So, you know, I'm okay with another 2 to 3 grand, but again, I don't want to cripple.
Can we poll, because I'm, I'm getting too many mixed signals here.
Dale, what do you want to do? I'm just going to poll.
I'll start with somebody else, because I'm probably going to.
I'll say three, 2 grand.
Reduce something to 2 grand.
I'd just say 2 grand.
Leave it? Tony.
Leave it.
All right, so we're meeting, that's fine. Anything else for police?
Just want to make clear that I brought that up to move it along.
And I'm going to ask.
Thanks for all your support, by the way.
I may be doing this so often because I need to focus, so.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Recreation, there are two budgets for rec.
Kevin, stop, you need to get the hell out of here.
That's actually probably the shortest we've had, chief, up here.
53 is one of them.
Yep, 53 and the second will be 56, so.
Because they can't be next week either.
Nope.
Oh, no, not 53, sorry, 56.
54 is actually the one we're starting first.
I don't know if it's appropriate, but it feels like it needs to say just condolences, condolences for your loss, Jim.
Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right, Jim, you got anything to brief us on or you just want us to?
No, I, actually, I can, I'll just make it really easy for you. Full-time and part-time salaries, the only reason they're up is we had two merit raises in, in this two years' time, that's the only reason. The other thing is, the only other increase in the, in the general fund is $300 I added in for the sunrise sunset. Now, I'd like to hold that for a minute, just, just hold that for a second.
What do you mean, hold it?
I don't, if, if, can I talk about revolving account and then come back to this?
He wants a timeout and he wants to go to something else.
Yeah, that's fine, two pages.
Can I do that? Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to talk about 56 for a second and then I'm going to, I'd like to make your life easy.
You've found a million dollars you're giving to the town.
Last year, last year, projection revenue for the revolving account was 191, 172. The actual revenue collection was 259, 192, which was $68,000 more than I projected. 68,000, by the way. That's, I told you in the beginning, that's what I did my master's thesis on and I have some more ideas to be able to save you a lot more money too. But then I also spent last year 161,491 in the revolving account that can roll back in, so now I have 99,304.33. I'll take the increases in, in your 01 and I'll eat them and you have no increase whatsoever in the 01.
01 means general fund.
General fund, correct. None.
So what you were saying is that the proposed increase we are seeing
Of 32,998.
Of 7%.
You will put into your revolving fund, except it does not hit the tax rate.
Correct.
Revolving fund is a wash for us, right?
Yep, correct.
That's the reason we wanted the revolving fund a few years ago.
Correctly.
So is what happens on this, that 232,668 goes back to 199,670?
That's correct.
Will you leave that?
But the revolving fund, actually, you know, fairness, if I'm reading this wrong, we saved 39,000, correct? Or so, did I do, no, I'm sorry, 30, yeah, I can't see the numbers.
32,000, that's correct. Sorry, I, I, let me tell you the other thing about this.
Thank you, Jim.
The very, very first year, I was very, very conservative. All the things that I looked at as far as the structure, as far as the revolving account, I all had hypothetical, but I also had not really run them. I knew what it could do because I was talking to other people, but I wanted to be conservative. I will not be conservative this next year. I will make you more money than you can.
I can shake a stick at a lot of money.
And as you see, as you see, there are increases, there are increases in all those, every one of those increases that I have in that revolving account that you see there will make you money.
So the bottom line is this, when we, the, how much is the increase proposed here?
7.
7.9%.
32,998 is the difference between budget last year and.
I know, I'm talking about what the proposed increase to his general fund.
Oh, 7 point.
7.09% is how many dollars?
7.09.
You're saying you will increase 0% and your revolving fund will cover that difference?
Correct.
Perfect. How much money is that?
Hold on.
About 15, right?
Right, I got to get a real number.
It's, um.
14, 9, 15.
Oh, see, I was doing it the other way, I'm on revolving fund.
And I'm just opposed to keeping it a little tighter budget and using the revolving fund as, as a, as a.
I can do that, let, just give me another year, give me another year to be able to look at what's, if the trend continues, which I believe it will, Counsel Leavy.
How many years is the revolving fund going to run?
One year. This is the second year now. I'd like to give you, have you give me one more year and then we can talk about that. But I need another year, because I don't want it to be an anomaly, an outlier. I want it, I want it, if it, if it happens.
Can I just ask one question about the revolving fund, just real? Jim, is the revolving fund, and I'm probably not going to say this just right, so. Is revolving, revolving fund really making money or are you just not doing things that you would have, no, hold on, that you would have otherwise done that were going, were really money losers or, or you were upside down on?
I did, I did not.
No, I'm, I'm not criticizing, I'm asking.
Any, any, any money losers, what I did was.
No, in the past, when we, when we subsidized things, right? And then when we went to revolving, if you didn't have the money to, to pay for it, you didn't do it.
Right, but the, the thing is this, we had four events, five events actually, that are, they're, we call community events. Remember, we did not fund any of those. Either revolving account will subsidize part of those, or what we'll do is have sponsorships and they will pay for themselves completely out of those, out of those themselves. So all those activities, by the way, are free, but they're also advertising for us to be able to get people into the, into the program. Like, for instance, today, at 1 o'clock, we'll have 1,400 people in town because of, because of the Halloween Haunt. The Halloween Haunt is the beginning part of seeing where we are, because we're also, you'll see, if you want to go down the advertising, what we look on the web, all those other things we're looking at. We are talking right now, the finance officer and us, about doing online registration. Online registration in five years' time in Burlington, Vermont, and in three years' time in Exeter, are almost 90% of the people are now doing online. That is a cost savings, because what, but I, but I like to take people and do some different things with, with them and I'll talk to you about that as time goes on, but I need just one more year. I need one more year to keep me where I am, to just make sure that it isn't an outlier, it isn't something. If it is not an anomaly, I think we're on to something. And I've been talking about this for years and here we are. And I'm, I'll just say that after, after years' time, we look at this, I think we could do some amazing, amazing things.
So you pushed the, the, no, I'm kidding.
Do you have anything else?
I want you, I just want to, just want to keep it level at this time, no, it'll be 0%. I'll take those and put it in the revolving. And I think, I think between the finance office.
I, I need clarification, because we're, we're talking, yeah, because I'm trying to have a running total.
Right now, what he is talking is, that has been discussed, is that any increase of the general fund just goes to zero.
So what you're saying is a reduction of the general fund by 15,000 and increase in the revolving fund by 15,000?
Yeah, he said he would eat that.
He's already, no, he's already got it in the revolving.
I won't even increase it, I'll take the 15 out that we already have, we have, right now, $99,000 in the revolving account.
Okay, so you're not covering it anywhere else. Okay, that's fine.
Counsel, what?
How does this affect some of your other plans? Because I know that when we, for the CIP.
It will not.
Okay.
But I do not want to get greedy. I want you to give me another year and if it does and we have another, now we have, now we have 200,000. You see what I'm saying? I don't want to have that much money in that account. I want to do other things with it. I, I'd like to expand the footprint of recreation, but at the same time, allowing us to be able to do things that are fiscally, fiscally sound and correct and right and, and allow us to be able to also improve our programs that we have without, without increasing the budgets.
So when we, oh, sorry.
I want to add something. When we get to the CIPs, the problem is also, and I've been discussing this with department heads, as you'll see on the capital reserve fund sheet that you received today, a lot of these, the projects that the CIP committee is requesting can already be done with the current
There's already money in it.
Capital reserve funds. So I just need to, and Jim and I actually talked about it yesterday, two things I said go out and get proposals for is to remove the, to replace the young children's playground, preschool, thank you, in the splash pad.
Right.
Right, and he talked about that when we, when we met as a committee.
Yeah.
You know, he said that he
Correct.
basically had the money to do it. But I, I do have another question about the revolving fund and that's, you know, so my understanding of how it's supposed to work is you, you made $68,000. Granted, maybe some of that money could go back into the town's general fund or into the revenue report, but then ideally, you take that money and expand your program.
Correct.
Right, and, okay, and I just want to make sure that's what's happening and not that.
No, 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 I'm looking for a win-win. Win-win for you, win for you is that you guys see no increase. Win for us is that we will be able to add product, products. The only reason that we'll add products now will be cost centers. In fact, that's what we're working with, with the finance officer on this, is cost centers now will allow us to be able to look at programs and see how we can allow those to be able to thrive, like for instance, a dance studio. The dance studio will, has different programs that we run, so that will be a cost center that we can look at really carefully and see where we are. The splash pad will be another cost center, allow us to be able now to have a water amenity for camp, which will also increase camp. So there's a lot of things. Now, the main reason what we, it really went, if you really want to know, is that we just did 10% all the way across as far as increases in, in programs, the cost of programs. That was the first thing. We're not going to do that this year, so it will be pretty much stable, so it's not going to go any higher than that. But at the same time, we wanted to make sure that we had something that was going to be in the account, so that's one of the bigger reasons it was. But there are other things that we can do and I'm looking at them right now and, and I think that with the amount that we have proposed for the revolving account, that those things can happen. But I just need one more year to be able to see. If it, if it, if it's true, the sky's the limit, as far as us and as far as you.
Uh, near everyone's counsel?
No.
Counselor Thompson?
I had originally left the general fund alone and done the increases because part-time salaries are up. Again, I'm very hesitant to go after salaries. My thought was to cut the revolving fund back to the same budgeted amount as a previous year. Based on you've made $68,000 more in revenue than, than you expected, my, my suggestion was to keep the revolving fund at the same budget level as it was last year and give you the 7.9, 7.09 in the general fund. Between that and, again, conservative, 68,000 more revenue, my feeling was that you could cover that without an additional, basically, $33,000 increase in the revolving fund, but leave your operating budget alone. I don't want to handicap any programs. I think you're doing phenomenally well. But my initial thought was to take the revolving fund down.
The revolving fund, I would recommend that you kind of over-budget it, because it would limit the number of programs he can offer. He is thinking about some adding on new programs and trying to expand what he does down there. So if he, if, if his appropriation is limited, it can only, it only limits the number of, of, of programs and he can only limit the amount of growth in revenue, okay?
But based on last year.
Yeah, but the.
That's a limit.
Yeah.
Sky's the limit, so, so again, my, my suggestion is it was done last year and there was 68,000.
Yeah, but for the revolving fund.
Right, and so to level fund it, it should be okay, and that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, but for the revolving fund, it's, the expenditures are offset equally by the revenues and have no impact on the tax rate. So if you reduce the expenditures, you also reduce the revenue in the revolving fund.
How about looking at.
Then the net amount, excuse me, then the net amount of what I'm asking to hap, happen is I was willing to leave you the 14,000 in the general fund. I suppose now my question is, could we, could we reduce the revolving fund by 15,000?
I mean, you can reduce the revolving fund, but you would have to.
I mean, how, how it's.
That doesn't, but reducing the revolving fund is zero to the tax, I mean, that's just their entire internal.
I guess what you're trying to say, I, I mean, I mean, let me ask you a question. Are you afraid that the department's going to get so big that what will happen is, is that it will, it will end up tipping itself over to the other end?
No, I'm not afraid of anything. I'm asking about how budget allocation.
Because I'm not interested in that either. We're interested in providing quality programs to the town that allows us to be able to do it without a cost to you and allows us to be able to do a program that's going to be manageable. I'm not going to hire any more people at this particular point in time. But to do it in a way, unless, yeah, like I said, it was part-time people, but it's not in a way that will not impact the tax rate.
Let me try this another way. You came in between the two funds and through Steve, asking for an increase between the two funds of about 47,000. You have, you have offered here to reduce that by 14,000, which we've agreed to. And what I'm saying is I'm still going to counter with the 47 and can you come back with another, a number in between that? Or 14,000 is as much as you're willing to do?
Again, it's not impacting the tax rate. Why would, why would we?
That's not my question.
Why would we not maybe restate what you're saying?
Yeah.
I think what she is saying is that between the general fund and revolving fund, the total increase is like 40,000, right?
47.
47, somewhere around there. That what the general fund is really doing is subsidizing the revolving fund right now.
Thank you.
It's, it's there, your department runs on somewhere around 250 and change, I'm sorry, 450 and change. So you're saying reduce 15K, I think what Counsel Thompson is saying is reduce the general fund even more to make up for the difference of the additional revenue you're making through the revolving fund. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
There you go.
Thank you, Phil.
Then you get the smirk.
Yeah, transfer, you, you want to transfer additional general fund costs to the revolving?
There you go.
And, yeah.
I was saying, instead of between the two, I'm, I'm, I'm saying, look, there's 45 or 47,000. I don't care how you split it up, I'm asking for.
You do care, because it doesn't affect the tax rate.
Well, I do care, but as far as the allocated one, yes, I do care. Yes.
If he's able to increase his revenues to cover that additional, that's fine, because it's not coming from the tax rate, correct?
Right.
And the, and the only thing, Jim, is I don't think anybody's worried about you, just so you understand, at least I can speak for myself. I don't think anybody's worried about you getting it so big that it's going to tip over. I think what we're saying is if it brought in X amount of dollars in this roughly a $50,000 delta, make it roughly a wash with the, with the 47 grand and the 15. And, and we're still not limiting the ability for sky's the limit. Because if it wasn't an aberration, you're going to come back next year and say, we need this because it was an aberration, right? If it, if it wasn't an aberration, you're going to have the same tools to work with this year essentially as last year, and if sky's really the limit, you'll be able to expand. You don't need that extra 47,000 to expand in theory. That's what I think we're trying to say, maybe not. That's what I think we're trying to say, maybe not perfectly, but I think that's what I'm here for.
Can I correct something on that?
Yeah.
If you reduce the revolving fund by forty-seven thousand, he can't do sky's the limit.
I don't think anyone wants to reduce the revolving fund.
Right.
It's a subsidy that everyone, that comes-
So, so I, I think what you're looking for is to move some of the operational costs out of the general fund to the revolving fund.
And, and let me clarify this too. If we move the money from the general fund, I increase the special revenue fund. Because if you don't increase it, you don't have the ability to pay, to buy it. You only can appropriate what we have. So if I transfer, say if I wanted to, say if we reduce the general fund by another ten, then I'd have to increase the special, just because we want to transfer it to the special revenue, then I have to bump up that number by ten.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, I just want to make sure people are-
But that doesn't, I want to get, well, Counselor Pike is, is your, is your point about this?
It's on this topic. And, and all it is, is I don't want it to be very clear that if, and I, and I don't have an opinion yet because I still, that's what we're talking about. But I'm certainly not of a mind, I wouldn't want to impair the ability to ramp up. I think in, in terms of conservative budgeting, if we're, if, if trying to cut additional dollars is going to appear, impair your ability, Jim, to, to do the things you're trying to do, which I think are excellent, then I, then I, I don't think we should do that. Because we're trying, again, going back to concern about over-budgeting for revenues. There's a, there's a desire to be forward-looking and conservative with this budget anyways.
Counselor Thompson. Give me one more year, and then I think we can do what you want to do. But I, I need another year to know. And I'll tell you why. Is because the infrastructure that will happen this year, I will know exactly where, because I have only so much money this year because of where we are, because I only went up to one ninety-nine. If we go ahead and do this this way, I believe that we, your answer to your question would be a win-win. Yes. But the thing is, is that I need another year to do that. Because I have to build the infrastructure, the things that we need to do to allow us to make those, those choices. I just need one more year. And that year is this year. Once I do that, then I think we can do what, exactly what you're talking about. But I need another year to do that. Because what will happen is this, is the things that I'm looking at, that to, to make those things, I want to make sure that we have that money that's available to be able to make those changes where those cost centers are going to be. Once we do that, and once we're talking about some other things too, there's like five or six other things we are looking at to do in that, in that thing, then I'll be happy with where, and I think you'll be happy where we are. I think that we'll have a program that is probably second to none, but at the same time will be flourish. But that's what we'll start. Because the thing is, we don't want to, we're not a city, we're not that. But I'm, but I'm looking at things that allow us to be able to, the best recreation department that we have in the state of New Hampshire as far as our size, and at the same time be fiscal conservative, because I am. I just need that.
Administrator, Counselor White.
Just real quick, ten thousand dollars. Could you transfer ten thousand dollars from general fund to special revenue?
I could.
So there's an additional ten thousand.
So instead of fifteen, it's twenty-five.
Right.
I, yes, I could.
So I can, is that-
You can magnify it last time.
Without impacting programming.
All right, Counselor White.
Without impacting, impacting programming.
Okay.
Yes.
These are stapled though.
There's the conversation.
That was, that was-
Okay.
So what will you transfer?
To tell you the truth, um-
Matt.
I'll, I'll have, you have, we have, remember that, that the amount that we have for the money I underspent still gets rolled into it, correct? So what she's saying is, is that that got rolled in. I knew what the number was you were talking about. So we'll take ten thousand off of that this, this year. And then look where we are for this next year. If you give me two years to lay out to you where we're going to be, then I can say to you. And I think with, with Matt, we're on the same page looking at some of these things that we'll be able to do more and more and more of that. Yes.
Very pleased with what you've been able to do.
Okay, and, and I am too with what you allowed me to do.
Yeah.
And, and I'm telling you right now, the finance officer and I are working in concert. We have some big ideas that aren't going to cost us a lot of money, that are going to make us a lot of money.
So that's ten plus the fourteen, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, so round number twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-four thousand.
Okay.
Okay.
Twenty-five.
We'll reduce the, we'll reduce the appropriation for the general fund by additional ten.
An increase.
An increase the revolving by ten.
The expenditures. We're not cutting expenditures, we're just shifting where the revenue is coming from.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. Counselor White, see what I'm saying? You have-
No, that was it.
So where do we end up?
So minus twenty-five came in the general fund, and he's going to add that to the special fund for revenue. What expenditures are you adding?
What I'm, I'm-
I get, I get, I understand. I, I understand what you're doing. I understand.
That wasn't exactly what I was asking for.
You, you wanted another twenty-two, give or take.
Doesn't matter.
Fourteen off of, fourteen off the general fund and ten off the revolving fund.
No, it's, no, it's going to be twenty-five K reduction in the general fund.
I'm understanding that now.
Okay.
Because the revolving fund doesn't impact tax rate at all. Generally.
I, okay.
So what's that last percentage going to turn into now, Steve? Do you know? Um-
Instead of seven oh nine, what is it? Do you know?
It's, if, if we take the twenty-five off-
Yeah.
It's neg, hold on. It's negative four point, four point seven nine. It's a reduction in the general fund.
And we'll just move those over to the, okay?
We're moving ten, because you said you could eat the fifteen.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And he still has money left in the-
This is the same thing, right? I had one-
The revolving. He's, you know, he still has money from the revolving fund, is that?
I'm sorry, say again? I'm trying to get the numbers.
No, we're good.
Yeah.
Let, let's just leave it.
Yeah.
So again, I, I just-
Jim, go enjoy your beautiful day and Halloween.
We reduced the general oper, general fund by twenty-five thousand. We increased the revolving fund by additional ten thousand.
Amy, do you want, you, oh, I didn't know if you were pouncing.
No.
The, uh-
Why do we get a certain-
These, these have the FY fourteen on it. I don't know what you all, we had only three copies before, so I handed out those three. Now we have like thirty copies.
But we can see them.
Is this coming from the revolving fund or the general fund?
General.
Enterprise.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Jim.
So we just gave back five grand.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't getting-
Enjoy today.
Before we send him off to the Halloween hunt, does anyone have any more questions for Jim?
I appreciate what you're doing, what your department's doing.
Yeah, you actually, this, your revenue making is helping the town a ton.
Yep.
So keep that up.
Yep, yep.
I'm glad you pushed for that revolving fund.
I was going to thank you, Jim.
Thank you for not being snarky back there.
Uh, library, fifty-five.
That wasn't snarky, nice. A little sarcastic.
Snarky's a little- Okay, sarcastic, sardonic.
There you go, that's a little less biting.
I mean, being sardonic actually means like biting you.
Doesn't sound as bad.
Yeah, there you go.
It's on the presentation.
Good morning. It's Carrie Gadblom, the director of the library.
Good morning.
I just want to say, I've handed out this brochure to you in case you've never seen it, just because it kind of summarizes everything that the library offers for our services. And we provide services for our community, for residents of all ages. Storytimes and programs for children, summer reading programs, book discussion groups, interlibrary loan, getting materials from other libraries that we may not own, one-on-one technology training for people who need help with downloading eBooks or using their tablet or devices. And many other services, as you can see in the brochure here. Outbound services for people in their homes who aren't able to come to the library. We can deliver materials to them. And basically, we're, we're a community for people who don't have a community sometimes. We have a regular elderly group who comes in and they read the newspapers in the reference area. And we've also created this year a new young adult section. We've pulled the young adult books out of the children's room and moved some mysteries into the tower room and created an area where they can study and use the wireless to do homework. And basically, well, some people say that the public library isn't needed anymore, but our statistics say that they are. The last year, our circulation has gone up six point two percent. In the last two years, it's gone up a total of seventeen percent. Our, we belong to the New Hampshire Downloadable Audio Books Consortium, where people can download audiobooks and eBooks by being a patron of our library. And that has actually gone up forty-seven percent in the last year. So basically, we're presenting a budget that we think, or we'll try to continue our current level of services for the next budget year. And that's, that's about it.
Thank you. Questions?
I have a few.
Counselor White.
Just a few. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I'm sensing you're going to have good answers, because in the past, it's been a little hard to get, get everything. If you start at the bottom, the building and maintenance. This year, we budgeted eight, we spent twenty-eight. I'm assuming that's because there was all that work that needed to be done and finally they got to doing it, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Was part of that twenty-eight in the capital improvement or, or in their fund, or that just, where'd that come from?
It came from their, their own revolving-
Oh, their trust, they have a trust fund or something?
Well, it, it's, it's, it's kind of like the recreation fund, where we moved money into that fund and they've accumulated some funds within it. And they were able to pay for some of the building improvements out of it.
Do you know how much, because that's, you know, obviously, they, they had twenty extra thousand. So how much is left in that fund that can be used? Do you know roughly?
I don't, do you remember?
I'd say seventy.
So there's about seventy grand.
I'm guessed, somewhere around there, yes.
Okay, so this year, we budgeted, um-
Twenty-three.
Yeah, and then in third, I'm just trying to get, I'm having trouble seeing it. I'm starting to need glasses.
Fifteen and six for this year and twenty-three they're proposing for this year.
Yeah, so-
Actually, we didn't use any money out of it last year, I don't think.
I don't know about last year, but I know they didn't spend money one, one of the years that, you know, that they needed to do stuff. And I, I know you needed to do work, so that's fine.
Right.
What I guess I'm asking is in seventeen, it looks like you're proposing twenty-three thousand more.
Well, it's not an increase. It's actually, we cut out twelve hours in our part-time salaries that was used for cleaning and maintenance. And we contracted that out, so we moved it into building maintenance. So it's not really, it's just, we moved it from one account to another. We're not asking for any more in that account.
Okay, so it's, so it's really not in building maintenance? It's going to be in equip, I'm sorry. It says building maintenance.
Yeah.
Eight, budgeted this year, twenty-eight, three forty-nine. Am I reading that right?
All right, they, okay, in the twenty-eight, three forty-nine, they had some additional expenditures, but they also shifted some costs, so-
That's not all maintenance in the building?
Well, cleaning the building is maintenance.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I'm sorry, I was thinking physical building and ma, building, so-
Okay.
What's the split there? Why don't they set another column up then and make it easier to?
We can certainly put-
Okay.
Um, cleaning in a different line.
No, because I know they needed to do the, there was a roof work or something.
We did do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, now we have, the boiler is leaking and we have three HVAC units that are failing on a regular basis that are costing quite a bit each year that comes out of that line item to keep them running.
So what do you think you're going to spend this year? Because you've got budgeted, if I'm reading this right, fifteen this year, correct? Matt, am I doing this right? So is, and, and, and they've spent eight so far, so is that, do you have any idea where you're going to end up this year in, in building and maintenance?
I, we, we moved money, we're not asking for any more. We just moved some from part-time salary to cover the extra cleaning, um, contracting costs. We may, I believe we'll end up using everything that's in the building maintenance. That's why we moved the money out of the part-time salaries into it.
Oh, okay.
For this year, right now. You're not, not next, not the year that we're talking about, which is seventeen.
Yeah, seventeen.
If you're aware at fifteen thousand, right?
Yeah.
And next year, or we're at, next year, we're proposing-
Twenty-three.
Right. That, we moved, I think it was eight thousand from part-time salaries into building maintenance. That's where that came from.
Okay, there was only other couple, health insurance, I, these are just, somebody else can drill down. I just want to get my three little questions here. Health insurance was budgeted for sixteen and fifteen. We spent forty-one. So there's got to be a reason, Matt.
We have two people who are eligible to receive health insurance. Right now, they're not taking it.
Yeah.
But there's a potential that they could take it.
Okay, and that's why that's jumping to fifteen in seventeen?
I don't think it jumped.
It's staying the same.
Well, I-
You're saying actuals to budget.
I'm talking to actual. That's why yours, okay. And those were my major, the, the only other one, which was part-time salaries, was one thirteen to one oh two. And they're, they're doing one oh eight in seventeen, so it's not a lot of money. It's five grand, but I'm just, we're only, we're spending one oh two now. So it's, you know, from one thirteen.
We did ax, we added some extra circulation hours. We needed some additional staff. We had sometimes only one person was working at the desk alone in the library.
No, I'm saying you spent less. All I'm saying is you spent-
That's, that position, I believe, that we moved, the money that we moved from the part-time salaries halfway through the year, that position was eliminated.
Okay. Okay, I'm sufficiently confused with the move. No, it's not your fault.
Does anyone else have a question? Uh, well, Counselor Thompson.
My only, my only comment was that, again, I'm looking at, at fuel, heat and oil that potentially, I was thinking twenty-five hundred could be reduced in that line item without hurting you, especially considering your circulation is up, so you're ideally getting, I don't know, more use or whatever it is. So that was my only thought, was that twenty-five hundred or some, some figure. I was throwing a number at it, could be thrown, thrown at heating oil, and I don't know where we are with that. And again, I'm addressing that with every department.
Yeah.
We actually reduced our heating oil. We cut that.
You cut the amount you asked for by a thousand.
They cut it by eighteen hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Yeah. The actual expenditure last, last winter was eleven thousand, three twenty-nine. So you're asking for twelve. so you're asking for twelve, so I get that, but prices have gone down since last year.
And it was a terrible year, maybe last year.
Yeah, the time we put it together, I don't.
So that's why I'm saying, I think that number could be further, I think that number could be further reduced, considering the price of oil has gone down about fifty percent. So I'm just throwing a number out there, about twenty-five hundred for the heating oil.
Since that's the topic on the table, other people?
Was it fail, was it?
Like, yeah, does anyone?
That was the only thing we were going through.
Anyone else support?
I mean, we've got a bank on it being, staying down. For another year and a half.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you do, I mean.
Yeah, this budget doesn't start till.
Right.
Next July.
Well, again, I mean, I didn't cut it by fifty percent, I mean, that wasn't the number that I throw out, so I just thought if there was any place to tweak, otherwise, I was fine with it, but that was the only place that I could see that maybe could be adjusted down a little bit, that's all I'm saying.
I I could see reducing the entire library by twenty-five hundred, because, well, I have a couple of questions.
Regardless of where they take it out of it, is where we, yeah.
First of all, I'm not anti-library, I love books. I love, my wife has her master's in library science, so I'm very like one. I still don't understand the building, what is the building maintenance against what's in the CIP, what's in the versus what's in the trust fund? What pays for what? Or capital reserve fund, excuse me, instead of CIP.
Well, the only thing that we so far have asked for and received out of the capital fund was the windows. Everything else, at this point, has come out of the building maintenance, and things keep happening unexpectedly, and I think that's why we have.
So the HVAC? Sorry.
There is a trust.
The HVAC and the boiler, I'm getting estimates for those right now. I have listed them in the CIP, but for instance, last year, our big expense that came out building maintenance was the leak, we had a pretty major leak in the library, ice dams, we had to, we got new insulation put in, we had to get the sheet rock fixed, you know, they cost over ten thousand dollars.
Did the ice? I mean, that to me seems to fall directly under the definition of a capital improvement program money should go towards.
Or insurance.
If it's, well, if there's two different things, one, if it's an emergency situation, she just withdraws it from the budget.
And then we.
We can replace.
Give them back money from CIP.
Right. And you're right, but the HVAC, if you're replacing the boiler, that comes from capital reserves.
I mean, that all, you have, you're sitting on almost a hundred thirty thousand dollars in your capital reserve fund, that could pay for the boiler, so you don't have to put it in building maintenance, so building maintenance is more like your routine, the cleaning and like the routine stuff, as opposed to those big expenditures?
Mm-hmm, I think.
But is it in building maintenance? I mean, it's twenty-three thousand dollars, is that going to fix the boiler?
It'll be more than that.
So what's that, what's that twenty-three allocated towards then?
Right.
It's, well, it's for everything that happens in the library, the lighting, the toilets, shoveling, plowing.
She's using it as general, what are we going to do when something happens?
We don't have a custodian, or, you know, sometimes we have to hire to have certain things done, like if the toilet overflows and really backs up, you know, if it's something that Department of Public Works can't come over and handle right then, I have to hire a plumber to come in. Electricians, we, the doorbell kept failing, I had to get the doorbell wired again. It's just constant trying to keep that old building going. It just seems that these things crop up all the time that are unexpected. Half of it is eighteen eighty-four and.
I just like not seeing the.
So it's all the cleaning, which we don't, we don't have a position for cleaning anymore, we have no custodian, so it's the whole cleaning contract, which I think comes to about eight or nine thousand a year.
Okay, so it's like half of it, or?
That's about half of it, and then for all these, and then the rest of it was just the regular things that happen to the building, and then also the the shoveling out front, we have a horrible time trying to keep the front clear for people, so during a storm or bad weather, it comes off the roof, it freezes, I have somebody on call while we're open, so they can come back constantly, like every hour or two hours, to put ice down and keep it shoveled, because it gets very slippery, it's dangerous, and it's still, it's far from perfect. So that, and last winter was a very rough winter.
So the heating and air conditioning is not in this, that line item?
Right.
It's in, it's in your capital reserve?
Right.
Okay, so, but you have, you have needs for the the twenty-three thousand for.
Yes.
The items you're currently spending, that's where we are right now.
So my other question is really more for you than for them, or you and Matt.
Okay.
There was inconsistency throughout the budget as to whether or not electricity was going up, down, or level, like different build, like different line items for electricity in different departments, some had up, some had down, well, not many down, some had up, some had level, like, was there any sort of consistent approach to the cost of electricity in two years?
We we looked at it by each building, we didn't look at it, you know, we didn't say, electricity is going to be this, okay? So, street lighting, you're probably going to see a slight increase on that, because that's actually charged at a different rate than the rest of the town, and then.
I'm looking at more buildings, so you're increasing by a couple thousand bucks, or five hundred bucks from actuals. So this one's like more like, but there's other ones like DPW, I think, where there was a massive.
We just anticipated that the rates were going to go up, didn't we?
It's less about the library and more about the approach that you all took to the overall budget.
It's a mix between our estimated rates increase plus actual usage, because there's some departments that, I mean, Town Hall's pretty flat, and we know where we're going to be open, we know the hours we're here, it doesn't fluctuate that much, it's just, you know, long meetings or something. DPW, they had a lot more this year, because they used it a lot more, probably because of the snow and.
Okay, I mean, so the answer is that you did a building-by-building approach?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I'm done. Anyone else?
So is the proposal to leave it, on the table is to leave it as is, is that where we are?
What I wanted, I was going to ask.
Yeah.
I'm going to propose cutting by anywhere from twenty-five hundred to five, five thousand in that, in that building fund, again, to your point, Phil, I I agree with you, I think there's a lot of the HVAC and whatever, you don't want to be scared into putting that in the budget when there, when it is in a capital improvement plan, and to your point, if something really emergency happens, they can pay for it, and we can talk about replenishing it, whatever, so.
So let's take a poll.
Well, just one thing, I, before we poll, how much is in that fund, just so we're at least making a decision, was it ninety, you said, Matt, or seventy?
Seventy in the trust fund, a hundred thirty in the CIP.
So, just so we understand, if they need a boiler, they have some emergency as far as equipment, the maximum amount of money that is accessible for them to use is, is it those two numbers added up?
Yes.
About two hundred grand?
Yes.
Give or take.
Yes, for the capital reserve, they'd have to come to you.
Well, I understand, but when there's, if there's something happening, okay.
And they could not use the capital reserve for operating. The other one, they could, the seventy thousand, that was the point I was making.
For operating?
Operating.
So seventy thousand could pay for like.
Books.
Normal stuff.
It couldn't pay for, seventy thousand couldn't pay for, for example, a boiler or